Well, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the rescheduled city council regular meeting. It's Monday, November 18th, 2024. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hersi?
Here.
Ms. Colicetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Ms. Welkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Mayor Marlin?
Present.
Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes of the previous meeting from October 28th, 2024. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, second by Jaia. Any substantial corrections? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion passes. Next up, additions or corrections to the agenda? Chris?
Thank you. I'd like to move that ordinance number 2024-11-037, an ordinance revising the annual budget to invest in a grocery store in Ward Three, Budget Amendment Number Three, be removed from tonight's agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Chris, seconded by Sharice. Will all those in favor, please say aye?
Could we know more? Could we speak to that motion? Give some...
I can tell you, this motion is going to be reintroduced next week at the city council, based on the information that has been received since the ordinance and the budget amendment was written. You'll see, it's coming back next week. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, thank you. Presentations and public input. We don't have any presentations scheduled, to my knowledge. We are ready to take public input. I do want to remind folks that this meeting is the rescheduled city council meeting. It's got a pretty light agenda. It includes the liquor license for the El Patron Ballroom on North Cunningham and the resolution for the tax levy. We'll also have an update on work that's been done to date on the grocery store ordinance. But again, the formal budget amendment and action on that item will be taken next week, but we welcome your comments, of course, tonight. This will be followed by the regular committee of the whole meeting, which is a very meaty agenda. It includes the zoning ordinance related to the text amendments and the zoning ordinance, and then several grant improvements and some other items. If you're here to speak on that item, I'd encourage you to wait till that meeting so the meeting record is clear as far as public input on the specific topics. So, does anyone wish to address the Urbana City Council? Please step forward to the microphone and state your name for the record.
Hello. I know that this is not the applicable meeting, but since the holiday is next week and some of the people are going to be out of town, I did want to make a comment about some of the stuff that will be on next week's agenda. My name is Adani Sanchez. I'm with a group called Carbonism Club, who has an interest in creating more housing units, more transit options, just basically trying to create our communities of abundance so that we have enough places for the people that we want to come here and stay. So I just wanted to talk about encouraging all of y'all to vote yes to allow duplexes in R2. I think this is a very gentle way of increasing density, something that we increasingly need in a growing community, which my understanding is that all of y'all want to keep growing. And so part of that is making sure that we have room for everyone without overspreading and expanding the capacity for infrastructure. So by preserving resources, we can increase density very gently, especially with just duplexes. But I hope you can do whatever you can to encourage greater density everywhere, just so that we have room for everyone. And doing other things to allow more affordable housing and incentivize the housing that we want to see. So if we really like duplexes, encouraging that. But also, we also need apartment complexes. We also need triplexes. So I hope you consider that as part of the abundance here in Urbana. Consider allowing duplexes in other areas, but definitely R2. Thank you.
Thank you.
From what I understand...
Are you going to talk, ma'am?
I was gonna... I'm just... Okay, thank you. I'm Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood, and apparently this is the only time that public input for what I see on the agenda, that we can talk about what's going to come up later on about the grocery store. Is that correct? Thank you, thank you.
You can speak about the grocery store.
Ma'am?
Yes, you may speak about the grocery store.
Yes, that's what I want to speak about. I just wanted to say initially, well, I guess, hopefully you've gotten some of the emails from many of the people that I've spoken with, and they looked at the newspaper and all. We've been needing it. We're a desert. Well, anyway, let me read this right quickly, so I don't waste all of my time. Not waste. There's nothing wasted about anything you can say about the need for a grocery store in North Urbana, Dr. Ellis Subdivision, the King Area, and all. And anybody can come, but we need to have a grocery store. We've been wanting this for a long time. Sharice Hersi, when she got on the... Mrs. Hersi, Ms. Hersi, when she got on the city council, she talked about it. Deborah McFarland, when she got on the commission, she talked about it publicly, and other leaders in our community. And I would just like to say, dear Mayor Marlin and members of this city council, Urbana City Council, I'd like to think, think, when I think, I have to think. You'll get that one day. Mrs. Angela Bradley, for her integrity in contacting current residents to support her effort and determination to apply for a grocery store in Ward Three. I hope that the council will approve this start of one of the necessary resources for the north end. I was hoping I could have some of my people stand up from, you know, the ones who are going to help us and the one who live in our area. Stand up tonight. Stand up, stand forth for this idea. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to address the council?
Good evening, council. My name is Darlene Bailey, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the grocery store. As you've heard from many people, it's a wonderful idea, but it will also generate tax revenues. We need that in that area. I believe, I took a look at it, and out of, if I just use $100, I bet you I'd spend 90 of them in champagne. So therefore, it would be a benefit to the city as well as to the area, and with the tax exempt developments you have going in that area. It will be very beneficial for us all over. I've taken a look at Imagine Urbana, and I can see that going on. I know there are some steps that has to be taken. It's a huge undertaking, but I believe we can get there. Thank you.
Take it off. Let's take this off. Good evening, everyone. So I'm here, I'm for the grocery store also, coming to Urbana. It would be really great to be in our community, and it'll be for everyone. And I believe at this time that champagne is really developing, finally. We have lots and lots of new entities in Champagne, Urbana, finally here. So I'm just happy all the way around. I do have a concern. I like the ideal because it's not just a liquor store, it's not just a casino, it's not just something of addiction. And I just believe that we have enough liquor stores in our communities, and that's white, black, Chinese, I don't care. You know, we have to protect our people. And every day I'm dealing with a lot of people who's addicted, you know, and they just walk out their house and go get it. It's in their neighborhoods, okay? And so if we build a grocery store, that's something different. That's like, okay, we're going to look out for everyone, and we're going to build something that is going to be needed, but is positive. It's not a negative, right? Because we could say what we want to say, but when you constantly build liquor stores in different areas of people who just don't have control, you know, of their own thoughts because they have things going on with them, you know? And they might not be strong as us. You probably could put 15 liquor stores in my community, right there at my house, right next door to my house. I would never buy liquor, but I don't drink. I don't have an addiction. See, I don't have an addiction. But my heart goes out to those of them who's addicted. And we have too many smoke shops. Every time we bring something in the community, for, it's 12 from Florida and Philo, all the way back down to Rice Street in Urbana. I counted 12 today. I went out and counted 12. 12. So I rode around the neighborhood to see if I could find something positive, or if I could find something more meaningful, right? For all people, all people. I'm not talking about just black and white. I'm talking about for all people. What's from Florida all the way to Rice Street in Urbana? Because Rice Street divides Champagne, right, and Urbana, right? So we have too many. I don't want you to take them away. I'm not saying that. I don't go against no one's will. However you make money, that's on you. But I just say that we have to be smart, and we have to be caring and loving, and I believe that's why I live in Champagne, Urbana, okay? Let's think about everyone, okay? And especially not put another liquor store nowhere. I wish we could take away the liquor license, because now they just popping up. Someone else just told me they getting ready to get a liquor license. I'm like, oh my God, you don't do the liquor. And they said, why? I said, because you're hurting people who's addicted. They're not going to tell you they're addicted. They glad that it's in the neighborhood where they can walk to it and get it. But if you walk into a grocery store and it's convenient for you, that's all I'm saying, that's more better, because they're going to walk to whatever's near. And that's what I want to leave you with. If I'm addicted, or I have problems, or I'm low income, I'm going to walk to the nearest. I don't care what it is, okay? But let's look out for everyone.
I'm Angela Bradley, and I just wanted to thank the residents of Ward Three for allowing us to hear your voice, allowing us to hear your concerns, and sharing that with our city leadership. I also wanted to thank Councilwoman Sharice Hersi for being a longtime champion of yours. And it was only through her example that I would even know that this was an issue for our community. And I also just want to thank Mayor Marlin and the council for looking so deeply into this issue and so diligently to try to find out what's the best thing for the city. So just want to thank everyone.
I'm Eric Sacks, and I would like to lend my support as well to strongly endorse ordinance number 2024-1137 for the grocery store in Ward Three. The absence of a grocery store in northwest Urbana has been a major problem for decades, and there have been many who've sought solutions to this, trying to bring in outside large companies, and that has not yet been successful. So with state funding on the table for a large portion of this project, it is a unique and valuable opportunity. Moreover, it is great to see someone local to develop a solution to a longstanding local problem. The matching funds that this ordinance would provide are critically important, yet modest investment in our community. Thank you.
My name is Marina Manetti, and I just checked out the site about this issue, and I saw that all the work is going to be involved in making this happen, and I am just daunted by the energy and commitment of people to support this. I think it's a spectacular thing that's being done by local people. For me, it's frightening, even the idea of starting something like this. However, this is something that I see as very, very helpful to everybody in the community. I wouldn't support another liquor store. I just don't think that's needed. You can walk a little further for the alcohol, but for the food, for the children, for the people who need nutrition, for the community, this is something that should not be ignored and should be supported wholeheartedly. Thank you very much.
I'd also just like to voice support for the grocery store in the north end. It doesn't sound like large corporate grocery stores agree that everyone deserves walkable access to healthy local food, but lots of us here do, even beyond Ward Three. I'm a resident of Ward One, I think. And also, I think this is like an exciting opportunity for local farmers. I'm really impressed by the effort that Ms. Bradley has invested in forging partnerships with the local community of people producing food here. It's exciting to see a new market share for folks that are actively farming and folks that might farm someday if they know that there's a guaranteed space for their food to be purchased within their community. Thanks.
Does anyone else wish to address the council?
Hi. I'm a little short. Okay, so I wanted to address the council. Number one, I definitely support the grocery store.
Do you state your name for the record, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Carrie Hacker, and I actually reside in Philo, but I'm a longtime resident. My grandchildren are sixth generation to be from Champagne County. And I've lived in Urbana, went to school in Urbana, and I do business here, and work, and play, and everything else here. So, but the one thing that I definitely want to address more, for me personally importantly, is the need for affordable housing. And I definitely support the duplex reauthorization, or reordinance, or whatever you want to call it, because affordable housing is definitely needed. The other thing that I really would like the city of Urbana to take a look at is, I really appreciate that the city of Urbana has the tenant landlord ordinances. One of the things I'd really love you guys to look at involves the application process going in the door. There's a lot of predatory practices being done by landlords, and it's not just Urbana, it's across Urbana and Champagne. People are going in to apply for housing, and they get the, you know, they'll tell them, hey, I might have an eviction three years ago, will that impact me? You'll just have to apply. Well, you know, my credit score might be a little under 600, is that okay? Well, you'll just have to apply. They know upfront what the criteria is for approval on rental applications, and they will not disclose it. I work with people that are spending $300, $400, $500 a month applying for places and being denied at every place. I'm not asking the council to take a look at changing any business practices. The only thing I would love for them to do is require landlords to be transparent of what the application approval criteria is. That is within the fair housing laws. You absolutely, especially since you are a home rule municipality, you absolutely can do that. I reached out to and spoke with, today, I spoke with Bob Palmer. He's part of the Housing Action Illinois, and was asking him the legalities of this. And he said, well, you know, Urbana and Champagne are both home rule. They absolutely could pass a transparency ordinance for landlords. He said, what you can't do, though, is pass any ordinances regarding rent caps. So I was like, darn, I was really hoping that was going to be a thing, but apparently not, at least not yet. So, you know, hopefully people will be out here advocating for that at the state level. But that's what I want to say, and I love Urbana. You guys have a really laid back vibe, always have had. Champagne's really awesome, too, but that's more of an industrial sort of a vibe, and you guys are more just very laid back. And I love that the city council is, you guys are pretty strong at advocacy. So thank you for that. Thank you for the council, and go Rockets.
Hi, my name is Michelle Casio. I'm a proud resident of Ward Four. I'm here to speak on behalf of Ward One, Ward Three. I am so excited to hear about grocery store in Ward Three, and I fully support it. That Ward Three has been desperate for one and needs one, and all people in Ward Three deserve to have access to grocery stores and food. So I hope that that is an ordinance that passes to begin with. Two, I'm here to speak on behalf of the ordinance on talking about duplexes in Urbana. On Ward Four, we have duplexes in my neighborhood that I live in. Not only does it bring more people to our neighborhoods, and people who can be in schools and live here, who can deserve to live here and do so, it also makes Urbana a better place to live because it makes housing affordable in Urbana, which right now, across Champagne County and Urbana specifically, is not affordable for our residents. People cannot afford to live here, cannot afford to buy homes, they cannot afford to rent homes. So if there is ordinances that helps make housing more affordable and makes housing more readily available for our county, I think that's a great thing to have. So I hope that you all will take that into consideration. I work in housing specifically, and I can see that residents in Champagne County are struggling to find equitable and accessible housing that they can afford. So I hope that you all take into consideration that people who live here want more folks to live here, want folks to be able to afford to live here and not struggle and be able to stay in their kind of they're supposed to be in. I love Urbana because we're, people love being here, they love their community, I love my community, and I hope that you all think about that as we talk about redistricting and having more ordinances to make housing, I guess, more affordable and housing more accessible in our community. Thank you.
I live in Champagne, but I work and often shop, including just a few minutes ago, and I do things in Urbana, so I feel like I have a stake here. And I just wanted to speak in support of the proposal to help a grocery store happen. I'm wearing a T-shirt, I didn't even plan this. I like grocery stores. I'm wearing a T-shirt of another grocery store. Grocery stores help keep people healthy, and I am so glad that the city has not committed all its funding reserves so that it has the capacity to do this, and I hope you will.
Any other individuals wishing to address the council? One day you'll be wearing Hart Strong shirts, I'm sure, right? Okay. We'll move on to council input and communication. Jaia? Thank you. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. I apologize. We do have, we have some emails to read into the record that have been requested. I'll start for the topics on this meeting agenda. This is from Esther Pat. Dear Mayor Marlin, Urbana City Council members, please vote to approve the $800,000 budget amendment to provide 25% local match for the Illinois Grocery Initiative grant for Hart Strong Meals to establish a grocery store in northwest Urbana. For more than four decades, people who live in northwest Urbana have been asking city officials to help to get a proper grocery or supermarket in the neighborhood. Those of you who are older might remember that in 1990 Walmart announced it would open its first store in our community at Lincoln &amp; Bradley. Mayor Markland and his staff worked diligently on that project, but then Walmart backed out and chose a Champagne location because it was close to both I-57 and I-74. When you drive on North Lincoln Avenue, you might notice that the Onyx Apartment Complex on the west side of the 1300 block north is set very far back from the street. The reason is that in 1997, when a complex was developed as the TIFF project, city officials were still trying to get a grocery or supermarket in the neighborhood and set aside that land for the purpose. And here we are, 27 years later, and finally someone has a viable plan to leverage state funds for our community to open a grocery store in northwest Urbana. I know you face so many compelling needs for money, but please consider how very important and how very long the people of the neighborhood have had to wait to shop for groceries near their homes. Thank you for your service and the incredible amount of time you spend sitting through long This message is from Ingrid Melly. Dear members of the city council, I'm writing to ask you to provide the 25% local match for the organization that is trying to establish a good grocery store in the Urbana Ward Three area. Food deserts are a national disgrace, and as a city, we should do all we can to make sure they do not exist in our neighborhoods. This is from Sana Sabualla. Dear Urbana City Council, my name is Sana Sabualla, I live in Urbana. I strongly support spending city money to pay the $800,000 portion necessary for the Illinois Grocery Initiative to match with 2.4 million to open a grocery store. Eliminating a food desert by creating a local space for people to get groceries is, in my opinion, an excellent use of city funds. This will positively impact Ward Three residents. It's a human rights issue. People deserve access to food. Through the Illinois Grocery Initiative, getting people this access is even easier. I urge the council to take the necessary steps to allow for the opening of a grocery store in Ward Three. This is from Lila Leopold. My name is Lila Leopold, I live in Ward Four. I write to add my voice to those who stand in support in the strongest possible terms for a grocery store in Ward Three. Every penny of the $800,000 potentially allotted by council to match the 2.4 million Illinois Grocery Initiative state grant will be well spent. The health, social, and financial benefits of access to fresh food nearby cannot be understated. Access to a nearby community-focused supermarket should not be the privilege of any one zip code, especially in a country in which healthcare is neither universal nor easily accessible. And this is not to diminish the incredible local initiatives and public health department we have here. The ability to regularly and easily access food nearby will collectively save residents untold health and pharmaceutical costs and be a very real, concrete step toward addressing health disparities across the community. This is not even to mention the benefits of offering jobs, collaborative and innovative planning opportunities, and a place for community gather in small and large ways around food on a daily basis. We all need to eat, and our residents deserve to have a choice in what we feed ourselves and what we feed our families. This issue is at the heart of addressing systemic inequalities and one that, when directly supported, has incredible potential to reverberate across Urbana and beyond. This is a chance to support very real community care, and I'm proud to live somewhere where such an initiative is up for a vote by... and I'm proud to live somewhere where such an initiative is up for a vote by council. City money could not be better spent. Yes, 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 to a grocery store in Ward 3. This is from Derek Brials. Hello, my name is Derek Brials, and I'm a resident of Urbana Ward 4. I'm in writing in support of the ordinance to amend the budget to free up $800,000 in order to receive state funding to build a grocery store in Ward 3. Over the years, I've seen this council allocate funds to many things that seem to have little to no positive impact on the working people of Urbana, particularly the black working class. While the UPD, who historically overpolices the black community, receives millions and still asks for more, precious little funds are allocated to proactively improve the material conditions of those with the greatest need. According to the Census Bureau data, 27.7% of Urbana lives in poverty, and the average household income is less than $42,000. The poverty rate in Illinois is 11.6%, and the median household income is roughly $80,000. I hope you find these numbers embarrassing, because I certainly do. I think we can all agree it's far past time that we address the systemic inequalities extent in our community. While I do understand you have spent down the budget considerably, throwing money at the gaping, hungry ma that is the police force and wasted a fair amount on a consultant that turned tail and ran when the city demanded transparency, an inadequate amount of funds have been allocated to the working people of this city who are pushed further and further to the margins. Here, you have a chance to fund something that could be helpful. I'll go on record saying I am skeptical of ventures such as these as I fear it will result in an exploitative company price gouging our underserved black neighbors. But I still believe this is a project worth funding. I'm proud to see my alderperson's name attached to this ordinance, and as a member of her constituency, it has my support. This is from Adam Nichols. I'm Adam Nichols. I've spoken out publicly about fiscal responsibility numerous times. Tonight, I'm writing about the proposal related to funding a grocery store in Ward 3. Although the proposal doesn't seem to use the word "grant", it appears that's what it is on the table. Money provided for a specific purpose without any expectation of direct repayment. A one-time cost of $800,000 may be small as compared to the annual recurring budgets for some departments, but that doesn't mean it should escape scrutiny. The big questions are, why should the city government step in here to spend taxpayer money on a private business? The default option is for the city to do nothing. This could mean that the grocery store doesn't get opened. People have to continue to go farther to get groceries, and things continue as we do today. The alternative is to bribe funding to a business being started by a local resident so people can have better access to healthy foods. The pros: number one, people don't have to go as far to get healthy food. Number two, another tax-paying business in Urbana, and not one that will send the profits off to Wall Street investors or overseas to some tax haven. Three, local jobs could be... would be created. Four, the city is more walkable. The cons: the people of Urbana pay roughly $20 per capita. It's 800,000 divided by 40,000 residents. It's not often I advocate for more government spending, but in this case, I think it's a smart move. It aligns with what the economic goals of the city. It supports a local business and serves the needs of the residents. It's not a recurring cost and will likely pay for itself over time with increased tax revenue. Please vote to approve this ordinance. Let's take a chance on trying to end this food desert. I believe that's all the... on grocery?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Chris.
Good afternoon. I'm writing in support of the city allocating funding for the proposed grocery store in Ward 3. Ward 3 has been a food desert for a long time, which is extremely harmful for the health and well-being of the community. Poor nutrition and food insecurity, especially for children, can have huge impacts on their well-being now and later in life. Eliminating these food deserts is important for addressing the legacies of racism in the U.S. and Champaign-Urbana as these food deserts disproportionately affect black communities. While the council might have concerns about the cost and reducing the amount in the general operating fund, I would ask the council to consider that, number one, spending the $800,000 will also be bringing in $2.4 million into the city, which should be seen as an investment in the health and safety and numerous studies showing the link between proper nutrition and reduced crime of Ward 3. Number two, it's rare that a private citizen like Angela Bradley is willing to step up and lead a major effort to improve their community like this. Supporting this kind of initiative from the community is important and would set examples for other people in the community that they can be leaders for change and that the city of Urbana will stand behind them. It would be a missed opportunity to make Urbana better to turn away such large... a large funding opportunity and committed member of the community. Please approve the funds for creating this grocery store in Ward 3. Brian Maxwell, resident of Ward 5. Okay. Yeah, that's it.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move on to council input and communications. Jaya.
Thank you. Related to the grocery store, I just wanted to make it clear that I'm only supporting taking it off of this week's agenda because it's coming back next week, and I'll look forward to hearing more about that. I also want to thank Mayor Marlin for reading comments from my ward. I usually am very proud to do so, but I'm fighting a migraine, so apologize for looking oddly at anybody tonight. I just appreciate that that helped with making sure everyone's input is provided. And then, just briefly, and I mentioned this last week, but I'm just gonna push again for ensuring that the alternate task... alternate response task force gets back up and on track as quickly as possible and that the initial intent of those funds is followed through and that we do see a meaningful exploration of alternate responses to calls for services.
Grace.
Thank you. Thanks for all the input and everyone who came out tonight. Want to speak on just a few things here. I'm in support of the grocery store and funding for that, and I appreciate some information that I got since last week from various sources, from Angela Bradley and her team. I think that we need some creative options as far as what funds we use and what's available. I'm looking forward to learning more, I'm guessing, in the reports of officers and next week, and hoping that everything's still smooth with the timeline. And I think that there are creative ways that we can get this priority funded, as well as some of our other priorities that we have. And then, the second point, also echoing some of Jaya's last point of the alternative response task force and the need to keep that going and some of that momentum. I've had some interest. I've been learning more about LEAP, Law Enforcement Action Partnership, if anyone wants to start looking up some about it, if you aren't already familiar. Hoping that we can have some more information coming and figure out what the process is on that. But I think it'd be really important to keep that task force going and find new leadership in facilitating some of the proposals. Thanks.
Mary Alice.
I just wanted to add that I'm very thankful that not only that residents of Ward 3 came out to tell us their thoughts, but also other residents within the community came out. I think that there is strong support among city council into making this happen, and also from the mayor. I look forward to hearing about different options that we have in order to get this off the ground. I recognize that we are under a short timeframe here. So hopefully, by next week, everything will be ironed out, and we can move forward. Thank you.
Chris.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank alderperson Sharice Hershey from Ward 3 for her steadfast leadership over the last six years on the grocery store. And her vision is a major driver in this. I want to thank, of course, Angela Bradley for stepping up and taking the risk and getting this going. And I want to thank Mayor Marlin for stepping up with her leadership. There's a lot of balls in the air with... regarding this grocery store, but we're trying to get things organized and make it happen. So thank you to all, to everyone. Thank you.
Any other council members?
I just want to reassure folks that, yes, the alternative task force is also a high priority. Right now, all hands on deck are focused on the grocery store. We recently, just late last week, received the final invoice from Barry Dunn as far as the charges for their work on the task force. We'll get the figures to you as far as what's left. And then, we'll have to... We... Absolutely, the plan is to find another facilitator. There will be funds... Funds are available for that and get that task force up and running. So, yes, the commitment is still there. It's just this week, it's grocery stores, morning, noon, and night. So it's going to happen.
Hello?
Sharice, go ahead.
Okay. I didn't know if anyone could hear me. I wanted to... Also say that I'm totally in favor and because this is something that I've been working for a long time and kept in touch with the staff of the city and their progress and their findings and everything. I want to thank Angela, in particular. She and I had very long conversations yesterday. And she is enthusiastic and extremely committed to trying to make this happen, and I appreciate that. This is not something that I was in the loop on from the beginning, and... but now I am. And so I would... I'm trying to help her as much as possible as far as where we can go from, as far as vetting this properly and having it done decent and in order. So Angela, thank you very much for your commitment to speaking this out and giving us the opportunity to work through all of the issues that need to be worked through. Chris and Jaya, it's appreciated that you, I guess, started the ball rolling. But moreover, I'm overwhelmed by all the support that I see from not just Ward 3 residents, but from other people in the Urbana area. It's too bad that it's like down to the wire like this is, but I do still appreciate the support. Thank you.
Diane.
Oh, hi, James. Go ahead.
Hi. I wanted to say that I'm really glad to hear that there's been a lot of effort on a lot of people's parts to look at this. I know when we heard about it just a week ago as a presentation, there were a lot of questions, and people have stepped up. I'm very happy to hear that Sharice is in the loop because I know how important this has been to her over her time on city council. This is an item that is on the council-mayor goal set for a reason. It's a thing we need to do. I am comfortable with taking risks to make this happen. I do think the discussion that's going on now will go on the next week is important because we are talking about a significant investment. And understanding more details of it will make us more comfortable with the risk. I do want to remind everyone that our goal here is to make a commitment that allows for us to apply for the grant. If you've looked at the DCEO website and see what happened with the first round of grants, you can see that this is a possible outcome for us. But we will have to go through that process and hope it will come out... If we can get our commitment in and get our application in, that it will come out favorably. I also will remind everyone to look at that because the first round of grant applications occurred in March, and the announcement of who received them didn't happen until October. And I think it's important to realize that this may be a longer-term process that may go beyond what the current fiscal year constraints are. And so we have to be thinking in long-term ideas about how we fund this that goes beyond what this particular budget year is. I'm pretty sure that there are options out there. There's been a number of great ideas that have popped up as a part of this thought process. But I... And I'm confident that we're gonna get somewhere positive by next Monday. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, I think that's everyone. We'll move on. Reports of standing committees, there are none. We'll have a report from the committee of the whole. Chris Evans.
Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of the committee of the whole, we have no consent agenda. We'll move to the regular agenda. And I move that Resolution Number 2024-11-072R is a resolution approving an increase in the number of liquor licenses in the Class A designation for Fuentes 10 LLC El Patron Ballroom at 1006 North Cleanham Avenue.
There's a second.
Second.
Moved by Chris, seconded by Mary Alice. Discussion. Will the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colicetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes.
I would also move that Resolution Number 2024-11-073R is a resolution estimating the tax levy for fiscal year 2024 to 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Chris, seconded by Shandra. Any discussion? Grace.
Thanks. Just wanted to restate and clarify that this is our thing we've been doing the past few years where we're keeping the rate the same, right? Although some people may experience some increases from other bodies or because their assessed value increased, that the city's being consistent in keeping our rate the same.
Any other discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colicetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you, Chris. There are no reports of special committees. We'll move on to reports of officers. We will give an update on the grocery store initiative. I'm gonna kick this off, kind of give some background just so we have this in the public record, and then I'll turn it over to Carol, and she's got information that was requested by council last week as far as funding options. And then, we'll talk about next steps, and the intent is to get this done next meeting. So, as you know, the city of Urbana's been asked to fund a local match for the application for an Illinois Grocery Initiative grant, which is issued by the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, DCEO. The applicant, Angela Bradley, is seeking 2.4 million in state funds with a local match of $800,000. Her goals... Their goal is to build a new grocery store in north Urbana, Ward 3, which has been classified as a food desert. Food deserts are defined as census tracts meeting specific poverty standards, population density, limited fresh food accessibility. This program intends and aims to combat food insecurity by reimbursing applicants for eligible capital and non-capital costs associated with building a grocery. I want to be very clear upfront. Developing a grocery store in this neighborhood is a high priority for the city, and it's been incorporated into the mayor's city council goals. I support the project. I think we all support the project. We recognize that the Illinois Grocery Initiative program represents a unique opportunity to leverage state dollars, local dollars, to secure state funds, to bring a much-needed grocery store to a neighborhood that's been waiting for one for 40 years. In full transparency, however, I want to acknowledge the challenges associated with this particular request, mainly because of the extremely short time period we have to make the funding decision and do all the logistics related to that. The grant application is due December 2nd. Normally, when considering a request for funding, particularly one of this magnitude through a grant program or a redevelopment proposal, we follow a standard process in order to be fair and consistent to all applicants. That process can include evaluating the project feasibility, the developer capacity, appropriate level of city contribution, financial risk, opportunity costs to the city. We ask for developer equity, experience, detailed construction costs, take steps to limit city exposure, require pro forma, business plan, and many other documents. And we formalize expectations and parameters through development agreements or grant agreements, all of which is intended to help us spend your tax dollars responsibly. In this case, the city's being asked to provide $800,000 as the local match. This is a large ask. It's similar to the biggest, some of the biggest ARPA grants, for example, that we awarded just in recent years. City staff and council received some of the required financial documents, including the proposed budget, last night. That's the reason we've, we're delaying this by one week. We simply have to have the time to do at least some of the due diligence that we normally do for a proposal of this magnitude. Last week, the city council also asked staff to provide options for potential funding sources within our budget and we're going to do that. Carol's going to, um, present that information shortly. I want to emphasize that we'll provide this match while complying with our established financial policies. That is very important. And I also want to say I personally had a long productive conversation, well, a lot of conversations with folks yesterday, but a long pers, uh, conversation last night with Angela Bradley and the technical consultant who's working with her on this grant, um, who's, uh, from Western Illinois University. And we have also scheduled an in-person meeting with them this coming Friday between city staff. So we'll be able to, over the course of this week, fill in and answer a lot of the questions we had and fill in some of the blanks that we have. All of with, all of this is to say that we're working very hard to perform some due diligence that you expect and you deserve within a very, very tight timeframe. So, um, Carol will discuss the options that, um, that the council has to consider which funds or a combination of funds that they want to use to fund this. Um, we'll get council directions on that. And then we will, um, draft a new ordinance and a new budget amendment that reflects the updated information we've been receiving and that reflects council direction that we get tonight. And that'll be brought back to, um, the regular council meeting scheduled for next Monday. So, we're just taking this week to do the due diligence that we really have to do in this. So, I'll turn this over to Carol.
Thanks. Um, and I, I do want to acknowledge we have people, uh, you know, we've, we've been sort of sprinting to catch up and we've been using all the creativity at our disposal. And some of those creative people are here to answer questions that, um, I, I'm just giving you the latest, which is evolving. So Will is here, Andrea's here, Elizabeth is here, I'm here, and the mayor's here. We've all been very actively working on this. Okay, so there's some options. I think we have some good options, um, for where this money could come from. So I'm just gonna run through those and make a few comments about each and then talk about one that we explored that led to more ideas. Okay. So, the first one is the general fund. And you identified that in the, in the originally proposed ordinance as a possibility. I think you're all aware that, um, the amount that's being requested would require you to waive the financial policy that limits, um, the, um, or that, that requires a minimum amount of money that's in the, um, fund balance, uh, to be retained. So that would require a waiver of the financial policy. And it would also put us in a position, which is perfectly, um, at your discretion to, to, um, decide, um, that going forward through the rest of the fiscal year, which has seven months still to go, that we would then, if we needed anything, any, uh, bring a bud, a budget amendment for something that was unforeseen, then we would, we would be continuing to, to need waivers on the financial policy because, because we'd be digging into the fund balance to a greater degree. So, that's the general fund. Um, I explored with staff the possibility of using CDBG money. So, um, what I would like to share with you about that is that in general, this would be an allowed use of CDBG funds. However, the activity itself needs to be identified in the annual action plan. Um, the activity itself needs to be identified in the annual action plan. And the last time that we had economic development activities in the annual action plan was the 2122 program year. And for that program year, we have less than $10,000 currently available. So, that, that doesn't mean we can't amend the annual action plan, but we would, that, that's a more time-consuming process. So, that doesn't look like a good prospect, but we did explore CDBG. Um, a couple of weeks ago, um, with Will leading the conversation, there was a conversation about ARPA reallocation. Um, and so there's money, as I think you were, uh, was explained, there's money in the sewer lining project that could be reallocated because that was still an open question about whether or not, you know, how to, how to, how to spend what's left in that particular, um, pot. This would, even though it's not a sewer lining project, it would, it would, first, it would qualify. Second, it's in the same neighborhood that was targeted, which is Dr. Ellis. Um, and the, and, and there's a minimum amount of money for sure of $300,000 that could be available, up to probably $500,000. And then were you to, and so you could take money from that project. You could also, were you so inclined, the money that you had designated in the reallocation conversation for social services, that could go and that to, total pot of reallocation money for ARPA could total $800,000. And again, um, as the mayor mentioned, these could be in combination. So this is not, you, you don't have to just pick one thing necessarily. Then, um, what we haven't, I think you're aware that exists, but we haven't talked about, um, in terms of the dollar amount. We invested our ARPA, um, allocation when we got it. And we, um, from the time we received it to now, we're at around $772,000 in interest. That interest does not have the same restrictions on it as, um, the ARPA money. So you don't have to, it's not limited on, it's, it's really at your discretion how you want to spend it and when you want to spend it. So, in the email that, um, Elizabeth sent me last Thursday, she said, um, that we'd probably be at $800,000, um, very soon. So that's a source of money, all apart from the ARPA interest. Again, that's not, um, constrained in any way. The last thing that I want to share that we explored, which led to something, um, interesting, was whether we could make an in-kind donation of property. Because one of the things, one of the challenges for this particular proposal is there's no identified site. So, as it turns out, um, that's not an acceptable match. However, we do have two parcels, um, one that the fire station, the north fire station sits on, and then the expansion site that we had purchased. That's a little over an acre together. The city could, um, in the next CIP, fund the demolition of the fire station to free up a site. I'm not suggesting that, um, we've done any kind of true, you know, drawings or anything. We did a literal test fit of, could you fit a 10,000 square foot store and the parking? Could you fit that on the site? And so that's the extent of it, literally, a block, you know, like a little square or a rectangle, and another rectangle, and it could fit. So, um, we, so we explored that. Then turned out that we couldn't do the in-kind match. But what we'd like to do, if, if you agree, is offer the property on a, um, on a, probably a 25-year lease for a dollar a year, um, the fire station property, when, when, after, you know, the fire department moves out, of course. So, um, that's all the things I wanted to share on the funding side. As the mayor mentioned, you know, we, we need your direction because then we, that will inform the ordinance that we prepare in our standard format, um, for the, for the budget amendment. And also, um, I would just say, you know, we always have a funding agreement of some kind. We either, if it's a grant, like the ARPA, we have grant agreements. Um, if it was a redevelopment, um, it was a TIF type of, of, um, grant, then we'd have a redevelopment agreement. So, we clearly are not going to be able to have a fully negotiated redevelopment agreement for you. But depending on the source of money and some of the other, um, things that are evolving, we would like to, in the ordinance that we bring, at least call out what the, sort of the, um, the, the most important issues that we would incorporate into a funding agreement that, that needs to accompany the actual, you know, um, giving of the funds, just so that you, um, in anticipation that you won't be surprised by some of those provisions. So, that's all I have to share at the moment. Um, you, I'm sure you have questions. And again, we have all the relevant people, um, here to help answer.
Jayah.
Yeah, thank you. This is awesome to have this much information. One thing is just a statement that I, if we can find a way without waiving our policies, it's my strong preference. I think it's fiscally irresponsible for us. I mean, getting it on the table was a priority. Um, but just to, to make that clear, that it's, it's not, not a good thing to do. Um, with CDBG, so I got, some of this is clarification in terms of the commitment. For the grant application, do we have to have that specificity of where it's coming from? Because if it takes a while to update the annual action plan, would it be possible for us to commit the funds now? Then do the, update the plan while the application is being processed because that's going to take some time? And then have the CDBG funds available by the time that the project would be ready to go?
That I don't know. Um, I don't know if that's acceptable. We've been, we've kind of ping-ponged a few ideas back and forth to find out. You know, that's how we found out that the in-kind match wouldn't work. So, I, I don't, I don't know. And I also don't know what the CDBG balance is that's uncommitted right now. I didn't get that, um, that piece of information. So, um, if you, if that's where, so I don't know that you'll be able to incorporate that into, um, although I could, Nick Olson is supposed to be here for the council or the committee meeting. So, he may know. Or if you're listening, Nick, maybe bring that number with you.
The part one, two, do we, for the grant application, do we have to have where it's coming from? Just, just for reference, right? Of like, obviously, again, in terms of being fiscally responsible, we need to have a sense of where are we coming up with this money?
Right.
But just to clarify for the applicant, because of that time crunch, too, if, if, if we can't have every minute piece figured out by next week, does that cause issues? Sorry, I'm looking at you because you got the application.
That I don't know. I, I don't know.
I believe the applicant is shaking her head that it probably would not cause an issue. So I, I think that's, that's another piece, again, to, to be clear. There's Nick. Um, you know, we want to make sure that we're being responsible.
I can summon, I can summon the staff.
Um, but it is so time-sensitive that I think, you know, I, I appreciate, this is a lot more information. I really appreciate all the staff working so quickly on this. Um, but also recognizing that, you know, if there's flexibility on our end, that gives us more time to, to make the most responsible decision of where the money's coming from.
Yes.
So, I don't have the exact number of what's, um, not committed. Um, one of the things we do when we have prior program year funds that haven't been spent, we'll include that in the current year's action plan. So sort of the combination of this year's allocation as well as our previous year rollover, that's all wrapped up in our current action plan. Um, and then as far as, um, if we would be able to potentially commit funds prior to amending an act, annual action plan, um, I don't believe that that would be consistent with HUD regulations. I believe that there needs to be the approved annual action plan, um, with that project identified before a commitment could be made.
Uh, Mary Alice?
So I, I really like what Jay is suggesting. And keeping that in mind and keeping what Nick said in terms of not being able to commit, the, the two balances that are unrestricted, so to speak, is the general fund and the ARPA investment or interest amount. Those are the two that are the most bendable. We can do what we want to do with them. Of course, we're not going to hopefully amend our financial policies. So that leaves us with the ARPA interest. Um, so, I guess what I'm thinking is if we move forward next week with ARPA interest and we ask to update the plan for the CDBG action plan, um, and then whatever we're able to then take from CDBG funds can replace the ARPA interest money, I, I think we can swap some of that out. But I guarantee, of course, next, next week, that we would have the 800,000 from the investment. Um, and then we would only swap out the CDBG if we were able to make that amendment. To me, that seems the most logical way to go forward.
Shandra.
I, um.
Go ahead, Sharice, and then Shandra.
Um, uh, I'm, I'm almost like where Mary Alice is. I have an even bigger ask. Um, the ARPA interest is what caught my ear as well. But I'm also thinking in terms of, we do the ARPA interest in, uh, concert with the lease, um, uh, property lease, uh, that we may be able to swing, which would also be, um, helpful later on down the line regarding real estate, um, purchases. That, that may be a, an option as well. And, and, you know, those thi, those two things together that it may, in fact, um, help in, uh, regarding the, um, amount that she has in her finance, um, her financials regarding the cost of real estate. And that would be one less, um, that would be one, because it has infrastructure there that, uh, that would not have to be, um, installed. It would be helpful regarding those particular items. And, um, and the simple fact that there can be, uh, a store and a modest parking lot placed on the, that particular, those particular parcels. Is that a possibility?
Uh, Sharice, this is Carol. I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna explain what you were referring to. So in the pro forma, um, in terms of the cost of getting, um, the store open, built and open, there's $100,000 for the acquisition of real estate. So that, the, the lease for a dollar would, um, remove that requirement for the $100,000. The, this construction cost would still be necessary.
Okay, yeah. But, but not, not necessarily purchasing real estate as much as, um, the cheap lease, um, possibility that you also mentioned.
Correct.
You see, you see what I'm saying? Since we can't do an in-kind, um, uh, swap out, that maybe we could still possibly, um, include, um, with, using the interest from the ARPA funds that could possibly be in, uh, used. But, um, also kind of, um, take some of the costs out of, uh, what her expenses would be regarding, uh, the purchase of real estate.
Yes, that's correct.
And that may actually bring more, bring the numbers down even more so, so that we can, uh, be more, if we keep that in mind, that's, that's all I'm saying. That's, it's an idea, I don't know if that could, if that would be, if that would pass.
Well, what you're suggesting is just a combination of the, um, leasing the, the, uh, fire station parcels plus the actual funding from the ARPA interest.
Okay. Shandra.
I was essentially gonna, um, say the same thing, that using the interest funds sounds a lot easier, faster, quicker. Um, and then leasing the old fire station spot for a dollar or whatever. Um, but I do like this, uh, Mary Alice's point of the CBDG funds. If it's available and we can swap it out and use less of the interest money, I think that would be a good idea as well, so.
Yeah, I agree with that, too.
Grace.
Diane.
Oh, we'll do Grace and then we'll go to you, James. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, also appreciate the information and discussing some of these options. Um, just a, a quick clarifying question first. You said that we could get 800,000 just from the ARPA interest?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Wow, yeah, that, I didn't realize that, um, that was an option. For me, that would be the, the top option since I don't know that we have any plans for it. I didn't even really realize that that money existed. So that, for me, sounds like the best option. Um, and also agree with some of the leasing options and see about that in combination. Um, I don't agree with the swapping out CDBG stuff. I think if we have this ARPA money available, then we need to use that and I think leave CDBG money alone where it already sits in the action plans, especially with what we've been hearing about last week and looking at the situation of number of people sleeping on the streets, going into. and looking at the situation of number of people sleeping on the streets going into winter. And I think we have a lot of other priorities that we need to balance. So I think that we need to be aware of the general fund. We need to be aware of the CDBG money needs. And if we have a spend, a fund balance to spend down, I think we can find, you know, there is the need. I think we can figure out how to spend that money, and that's also another priority. So agree with the ARPA interest money and the leasing option. And then I had a question about, you know, we've been working on looking at an incentive for a grocery store in this area for a while as city staff and admin. And I'm wondering what was the current thing? Like, was there any incentive option that has been explored or currently an option for people?
What we, what we had thought we would use at some point, if we were dealing with a private entity, was that we would propose some kind of rebate on sales taxes that wouldn't require an out-of-pocket expenditure. However, and, and what I think we had talked about at some point, probably during the mayor council goal discussion, was, and I think, I think actually, maybe Chris had, had actually suggested an amount that we should set aside as the incentive in that discussion. And where we were at that time was, it wasn't about the amount. It was finding, finding a grocery store developer, let me, let me just say, that was interested. I mean, we, we, I mean, Andrea Rudy has worked on this literally for years. And we, we have an economic development check-in. And every week, we get an update, and there's always something happening and some new person that she's talked to. And we haven't been able to get any interest. So having a pot of money was secondary, because we needed to know. We didn't even know what the order of magnitude was going to be. This is the first time that we've had a specific request to respond to. And that's why, you know, that's why it's, everybody has, has started sprinting to try to, to help. So we, we had never anticipated an out-of-pocket incentive. We weren't closed to it, but we had no idea what it might, what it might be. So asking for a money, a set aside was, it just, would have parked some money for something that might never have happened. So that's, that's, that's my answer to your question.
James?
Okay, I have a, I've got several things, and some of them involve questions, so, so bear with me. First of all, I want to add my voice to the list of people saying the ARPA interest money is, is the way to go on this. I am also supportive of a favorable lease model for the property associated with the, the old fire station that's going to be available at some point. I do have a, I do have a question. If we have the 800,000 committed with the, with the interest from the ARPA funds, does it add value to the grant proposal to have an official indication that we are interested in putting this land at a favorable lease agreement to the proposal? Because I, I would be supportive of that as well. I think that's a fabulous reuse of that land. But I, but I don't know if we need, to answer that question now, unless it would actually add weight or merit to the grant application. And then, in which case, I think we should do something about it. Would it, would it add?
Can I respond to that?
Does that we have 800,000?
Um, I, I think it would, and I think it would for two reasons. One is the reason that Sharice was trying to identify, which is it's cost avoidance for land, for real estate acquisition. So that would, that would be to the benefit. But also, it's site control, right? And that's something, you know, in a, in a, in a grant, when you don't have, if you don't know where the money's going to be spent, that, for the, for the entity that's evaluating proposals, they're like, well, these people don't even know, this is so still in the works, you know. It's not, they haven't identified a site and they don't have control of the site. That would solve that problem. That's why when we started talking about it, we, we thought that, well, that would, that would really strengthen the proposal.
Okay, so I would, I would suggest that that either be an option or a, a part of the thing that we address next week, because it, because it would add value. Just in, when I'm looking at this in the timeline, I'm not, I'm finding it hard to believe that any money would be spent on this project in the current fiscal year, just because of what I, what I see from a timeline standpoint. Is there any reason to believe that we would be expending any money in this fiscal year for this project?
I don't think, I don't, I agree with you. I don't think any money will be spent from our allocation in this fiscal year.
And so even though we don't appear to need it, what is the year cycle? I should know this because I've seen it three times. But what is the year, what is the annual cycle for the CDBG plan?
We produce an action plan each year.
But when, when's it start and when's it end?
The program year begins July 1st and ends June 30th.
So if, if for whatever reason, and I'm not advocating for this, if for whatever reason, we believe that CDBG funds would be useful and the council is on board with using it, we could put it in next year's plan and be able to spend money that way.
Another factor I do want to mention with CDBG before it can be committed to a project is an environment, an environmental review needs to be completed. If it's a project involving new construction, potentially, that's kind of a higher level of review, which has a longer time span. So again, that would be another factor to consider if there's an imminent commitment of funds that needs to be made.
But my premise that we would not have to up, necessarily update this year's plan to go down that path if we saw a potential need for it. We could do it through next year's plan.
That's correct. If funds were going to be committed at a later date.
Yeah. It doesn't sound like that's the direction we would end up going, but it just felt, it feels to me that we're all, we, we've been a little bit focused on, how do we do that with this year's money? But I don't, I don't see how that's likely. I mean, I want it to happen as soon as we can possibly get it to happen. But just because of the timing of how the state takes these grants in and approves them and how long it takes to get, frankly, anything done these days, I don't think it's going to be in this fiscal year that dollars are going to be expended. So we should consider what we could do if we're looking into spending it next year as to what our options are. Thank you. That's everything.
Okay. Chris.
Just a general inquiry question. This is for Elizabeth Hannan. I saw in budget number, budget amendment number two, that the general operating fund is going to have about $600,000 cushion before we get to the hard 25%. Is that, am I remembering that right, Elizabeth?
Yeah, it sounds right.
Okay. And I'm just offering that as one of our options as we try to cobble together an $800,000. But I'm like everybody else. I think that ARPA interest looks good.
Jay.
So I have a few more thoughts just to, to complicate things a little bit. I think one is, yes, we need to have a plan, but I also want us to be thoughtful about how are we limiting ourselves if we're too specific, right? Because if we say, depending, you know, on, on, you know, some of the requirements, for example, with CDBG, we're going to get into issues of supplanting, right? So if we say we're going to use ARPA, and then we decide, actually, you know, this is something that's allowable with CDBG and it's, it's a good use of those funds, so we're not worried about lapsing funds. This would be a good use. I don't know, but I would imagine that there could become an issue of like, well, no, you can't use it for that purpose because you've already said you're going to use ARPA money, or ARPA interest money, rather. So I think that's, that's a piece to consider. And I think also there was, what, like 10K that was like maybe usable for this purpose? Is that correct?
So in the 21, 22 program year annual action plan, and we had identified economic development as a project we were going to potentially use program funds for. That was the last year that we did that. So that would be the last year that, based on our current action plans, I believe we could draw from, like, at this point.
I think getting clarity on if we use CDBG funds for this project, what does that mean we're not doing, right? Like, what, what is that, you know, what is the impact in terms of social service grants? In terms of potentially addressing concerns around folks who are unhoused? That would be really important, because while I 100% agree that the fact that we have this money from the interest is incredible and an opportunity, if we use it, it also means it's not there to continue to get interest, right?
Only once we actually spend it.
Once we actually.
While it's, while it's just parked, waiting, it, it will.
It would continue to grow. But at some point, if we use this money, it's not there to continue to, to gain interest. So I, I think that's just my one note to think through, right? Of, I think, being willing to use these funds for that purpose is, I'm, I'm all in. Yes, let's definitely do that. But I think having a better understanding of, are there other funds that we could use without taking away from our opportunities to benefit our community other ways? Especially if, you know, there are caps in terms of how long you can keep rolling funds over. If this makes it so that we can use some of those monies that we want to be bringing into our community from federal funds that we would be at risk of losing or that we're not really using and we're not taking anything away from other projects by using it, I would say it's actually beneficial to use those funds first so we can keep these flexible funds continuing to build interest. So my recommendation would be to say for next week, we're making a commitment to providing the necessary funds. That's the important time-sensitive piece, right? As we're looking at next fiscal year's budget, because I agree with James, this is not going to be money that's going out the door this fiscal year, most likely. Then it gives us time to assess what are the options in terms of CDBG? What are the pros and cons, right? Would be, be taking money away from other projects that we really want to make sure we're investing in? Or is this money that's just sitting there that we said we want to go to this kind of thing that we're not using, and if we don't use it sometime soon, we're going to lose it? So that's, that's what I would just encourage. And yes, definitely to using the land as well. Sorry, and then I'll stop talking. Because even if it's not a match, even, you know, for the reasons that you've already stated, I think it also shows the commitment of the city, right? So in terms of, in, in terms of my experience with grant writing, if you can show that there are other vested parties that want the project to succeed, that matters.
I think what would be helpful, if Angela knows, what documentation do you need to supply for the application in terms of the commitment?
I assume you, they're not asking for a budget amendment. What, what do they need to see from us next week?
That's exactly what I'm texting our consultant about. But from just preliminary conversations, we just need a general letter of commitment.
Letter of commitment saying we're good for the 800,000?
Yes.
And lease on the property, if that's something you want.
Yes, okay. That would be wonderful. Thank you.
Well, that, I don't want to force anything on you that you don't want, but I figure land would be a good thing. So that simplifies things. That gives us time. Yes, James?
Just, just one question and one clarification. What is our current expectation for when we'll be done with the old fire station?
May. May is the hopeful date. June is what, May to June of 2025.
So good, a good timeline to match up with what's going on.
It's perfect, yeah. It's a perfect timeline.
And I, I do want to clarify for the public that the interest that we're talking about from the ARPA funds, that's from, we, we received like two allocations from the federal government very early on, before we actually spent any ARPA funds. So it is as big as it is, the interest is as big as it is, because we held all of our allocation for some period of time. I don't know if it was a year. And then, then we started allocating it and people starting to spend it. So it's not a big chunk of money as something itself that earns interest, but it will do that. It's a big chunk of money because we held, you know, 12, 12 million dollars roughly from the beginning and have only been distributing it at least a, some, something about a year later after we received the actual allocations. Is that, did I get that correct, Elizabeth?
Yes.
And the reason we held it is there was a very thoughtful process that we underwent to distribute those funds. So, so that's why it wasn't just shoved out the door, but.
Yeah, it, it's not, it's not growing very fast now because we've spent as, a lot of the ARPA funds down. It's still growing. And that's why it'll be, it's not big enough exactly right this moment, but it will be soon. But, you know, holding on to it, it's only going to earn interest based on how big it is, not based on, not to the degree that it was when we received the original allocation.
Got a hand? Mary Alice?
So given this whole conversation, what I'm wondering is, I mean, it sounds to me that there is consensus in terms of, at first, we'll spend the ARPA interest money. And second, we would do the, the dollar lease for the property if that meets the needs. Since the applicant only needs a letter, I'm wondering if we have to go through the whole process of an ordinance, a budget amendment, or, right?
If, if you're comfortable with the letter of commitment from the city to the grant, grantors, then that's what we can go with and get this done this week.
I would, I would ask that we, at the very least, have a resolution. We may not need a budget amendment, but I, I would like that something we, we vote on, on the record.
Gotcha. So we can prepare a resolution for next week.
And that resolution, at least in terms of the things that are consensus, is the first one, spending the ARPA interest money. And the second one, potentially leasing the property.
Do you want to get that specific?
I personally would recommend not doing that because we're tying our hands, right? That would, again, I don't know the details of, of CDBG or some of our other grants. But generally speaking, if you have money that you say you're paying for something, then, and you, then you say, well, actually, I want to use this new grant or this other grant that I have. If you've already said that you have money to pay for it, that's supplanting. It's not allowable in most situations. So I think if we are passing a resolution saying we are committing the funds and the property, that's what I, to me, makes sense. And I hear that of like, yeah, it's not as much money that we're making on interest. But if we're talking about going from 772 to 800,000, that's, that's a grant to a social service agency. That's 30K, right? So if we don't, if we don't need to, to use that more flexible funding, let's hold on to it. But again, I, I want to understand what we'd be giving up if we're using a CDBG. So I don't want to rush it. It sounds like we don't have to. So if we can make the commitment just to say, yes, we will provide the money, and we will continue to brainstorm how, or it'll be the next council that makes that decision, because we will have already made that commitment. And I think we are all in agreement that the, the property piece is, is worth doing. That's my, my two cents is don't tie our hands to a point where we have to say, no, we can't use federal money instead of using flexible funds.
Carol?
Yeah, I, I totally agree with Jay's take on this. The resolution should say, we're going to commit 800,000. And if the property is, meets the needs of the project, we'll, we will offer it at a favorable lease. That's all it needs to say.
Technically, it probably should read up to 800,000. If the agency decides to give less than the 2.4 million requested, then the match is going to be proportionally less as well, so.
Mayor, I think perhaps the applicant might have some clarifying information from the state and has been attempting to raise their hand.
Sorry.
Yes, you are precisely right. I do have clarification just from our consultant. And this is exactly what he says. It will have to outline, the letter will have to outline the amount that they intend to provide, but shouldn't require a listing of sources.
Perfect. Thank you.
Excellent.
Carol, you had something?
I, I, I just want to be sure that I'm hearing things right. I, I thought I understood you to say, Jaya, that you didn't want even a resolution, did I hear that wrong?
No. No, I think a resolution's great, I just wouldn't commit where the money is coming from, just so we're not tying our hands in terms of, you know, what's going to be the best use of different funds.
That, that's fine, I just wanted to be, I, I do think it's important to have a resolution that outlines the primary terms of this, because then there'll be no misunderstandings, and if votes need to take place by a new council, they'll know what this council committed to. And while the mic is on, I'm just going to say, even though you think it dovetails really nicely when the firefighters would move out, and when they might need the property, if we're going to demolish it, that takes months, so, and if we need to do environmental work, that could take longer, so there, we, I mean, I think it can all work out, but it's not a like, here's the key and, and everything's good. It will take time, if we're going to do the demolition.
That, that's why the resolution needs to say that we're offering it if it, if it makes sense, right? Because the actual project may determine that, the, the shape of that property or its location doesn't fit in some way, so, we're making the offer, it may not, it may not pan out that way.
That's important.
I have a.
Sharice?
I have a question, too, regarding the envi, an environmental study, as far as, as someone had said something about that, I think it was Mr. Nichols. The other, the other thing that, other piece of that is, also, responsibility for that study would fall on, would that fall on us, or would that fall on Angela? And therefore, the cost of the environmental study is also something I'm thinking about.
I'd say it varies from project to project, a lot of the time, staff are capable of completing the HUD's environmental review requirements for so, for some more complex projects, like larger multifamily developments that we've committed program funds to, those have been things where the developer has needed to contract with a third party for an environmental assessment. But it, it really varies from project to project, and things like whether you're acquiring an existing property, or constructing a new property on an undeveloped parcel of land, so, it varies.
Well, and I ask that because of the simple fact that that will also affect her application process, as to whether or not she would have to include that cost, as, in, in lieu of maybe purchasing real estate. And that's why I was asking, you know, where that would, where that would fall, because I'm also thinking about her application process and the grant.
I'll, I'll, I, I think one thing that we should recognize is, there's still an awful lot to evolve about this, so, you know, one of the things that we've discovered on other property is, and, and the expansion site that we bought, that's next to the Circle K, I'm not saying there's, please, nobody say that I said there was any environmental contamination, however, sometimes there is, when you're proximate to a gas station. So, there's things that are unknowns, there, there's a lot that's unknown, because the, the, the store hasn't been laid out, there's been no, you know, there's a lot of unknowns. So I don't know that that particular unknown needs to be solved right now, just because it's bubbled up. That's something that we can sort out if and when we need to.
Okey-dokey.
Grace?
Thank you. Just wanted to echo Jaya's point there, and I agree, and kind of take back the, the blanket statement of not using CDBG funds, because I think that is important, and remembering that, I think, is that the one that's limited, only fifteen percent for social services, or, but, I mean, I think that would be the important piece.
There's a cap for social services, yes.
That would be the important piece there, is, especially looking at some of our other priorities, and with winter sheltering, I think that would be a really important piece to hear from community development and some of our other community partners, and looking at this money and say, what CDBG money is maybe already allocated and can be used for those things versus not, and if we have a limitation on those allowable uses, then I think it does make sense, as Jaya was suggesting, actually use some of that CDBG that is for more capital investments, and then use that flexible ARPA money in other places where we need it. So I, I am interested in hearing more on that, and seeing about a balance between maybe CDBG funds that we're having issues spending other places, and some of that ARPA interest money. And it seems like, what I'm understanding is, there's maybe two parts to this now, like the first part being the letter of commitment, and that saying, just generally twenty-five percent match up to eight hundred thousand, and possibly the, you know, offer of the land leasing option. And then maybe, it sounds like separately, coming behind that would be the resolution just kind of codifying some of the terms and where we'd be pulling that money, because it sounds like we might not need a whole budget amendment, but I think it is important to say where this money comes from, so that a whole next set of people aren't held for it, no? Why not? Yep.
I, I, if I, I, let me tell you what we're planning on bringing next week. Nick is now regretting that Brayden is on vacation, but it, you're the man, and I know you can do it, and, to answer all the questions, but they, but it actually doesn't need to be decided yet, that's not the, that's not as urgent. So what we're going to bring next week is, we're going to bring a resolution that is as, as flexible in terms of, we're not going to talk about where the money's going to come from, but we are going to make a commitment to money, we're going to talk about offering up to eight hundred thousand dollars, we're going to talk about offering the, the property for lease, if that would work out, and then some of the other broad parameters, like, one of the parameters that would, that you will see in the resolution is, that our eight hundred doesn't, doesn't go to the project if they don't get the grant, because then there's no, you know, it's things like that. So we'll have those broad strokes outlined in this resolution, and then, there's lots of time subsequent to that, to talk about the issues related to CDBG, which I think are good, and I also think it's a good refresher to, to just talk about CDBG in general, because our allocation was already reduced, and lord knows what's going to happen in January. So, I think it's just a good idea to just have it all in mind of what we have, and what we usually expect and may not have reason to continue to expect. So, we'll, we'll follow on with that, but the urgency is not the same as getting the resolution next week.
Okay, so there'll be a resolution prepared for next week's agenda to be voted on, that'll be an action item at the next council meeting, and then we'll draft a letter of commitment that would go with that resolution to be included in the grant packet. Everybody on board with that, thumbs up? Okay, all right.
Thumbs up.
Thumbs up, all righty, we have our, we have our next steps. And with no further business before this council meeting, we will stand adjourned and move on to the committee of the whole meeting as soon as possible. Thank you. Thanks for coming out.